Okay, this is the Finance Committee for November 30th and calling this meeting to order. Let's begin with a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, if we would please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I didn't, I neglected to say we're calling this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. For the minutes, Margaret.
Very good, thank you.
And would you please call the roll?
Kevin Shively.
Here.
Dawn Contafio.
Here.
Lisa Valente. Michael Miller.
Here.
Lori Rosasco-Schwarz.
Yeah.
Tony Sinto.
Here.
Mary Isaac.
Here.
And Donna Sidell.
Okay, well, we have a quorum. So if we would begin then. Mr. Miller, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-123 to the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 28-123. Be it resolved that resolution of official intent to reimburse expenditures with bond, note, or lease proceeds is hereby approved. Full resolution attached.
I'll second Dawn Contafio.
Thank you. So in discussion, do we have, we have the Bond Council here with us today, I believe?
And Maria.
Yes, I'm here.
And Maria is back with us as well. Great, okay, excellent. Then could we start from the Bond Council and give us just, I would like you to give us just an explanation of what this is in short, just what we're, what we're trying to do here with this resolution.
Sure. In order to meet certain tax requirements called the reimbursement rules or regulations, this resolution that's before you enables the town to first pay the purchase price of the Hardy property from town funds and then reimburse those town funds from bond or note proceeds. In other words, the resolution renders the order of source of funds used to pay for the purchase of the Hardy project irrelevant. They are not irrelevant for tax purposes unless there is a reimbursement resolution in place. Now, when the town adopted the $10 million land purchase resolution, almost this exact language was in that resolution. Except this resolution specifically refers to the Hardy property. The reimbursement resolutions require a specific reference to the property that might be paid for first from town funds and then reimbursed with bond proceeds. So, to put it in a very brief manner, this is really a tax housekeeping matter. What, so let me tell you what the resolution doesn't do. It doesn't appropriate any money, not one dime. It doesn't use the word appropriate or appropriation. It wasn't submitted to the Board of Finance. Prior to adoption of this resolution, the town has a $10 million land purchase bond authorization available pursuant to a resolution it adopted on March 2nd, 2020. I'll just add as a side note, there is, there are a few dollars left, I think a million seven left from one other land purchase bond resolution. And that will be used up also with, with the Hardy property and then we'll go to the $10 million authorization. But basically what you have left is a $10 million bond authorization adopted March 2nd. What happens after you adopt this resolution? You have $10 million available. In other words, it doesn't change. So this resolution is really housekeeping. It protects the town in the event the order of payment for the purchase of the property is town funds first and bond or note proceeds second. That's what it does.
So I have a couple of questions and begin and then I'm happy to open it up to other members of the committee to ask their questions. So if I understand correctly, then what you're telling me is, or telling all of us, is that, first of all, this is a protection in terms of just guaranteeing that the funds are there for tax purposes so that there are no additional tax liabilities to the town? Is that, is that a reasonable explanation?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you said that no appropriations are being made here in the sense, we're not actually taking money out of the general fund at this point, right? And, and it's in, I think it's even very possible that that money would never, or even likely, that that money would never be taken out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Under the circumstances of this sale, that is correct.
Right. Now, the bonds that you were talking about are going on sale very shortly, are they not?
Correct.
Is there, is there an expectation of when that, that bond sale will be closed?
It's expected to be closed prior to the closing of the property. If I'm incorrect about that, Dan can straighten me out.
Mr. Chair is Dan Shopek. My underst, my understanding is that the actual sale is taking place this week. And I spoke with Matt Spurindel, who's the Phoenix Advisors, advises me that he anticipates the funds then would become available on the 17th of December. So, all else being equal, it's not going to be necessary to touch the general fund for this purchase.
So in essence, you know, the, the, the bond sale will be done before the end of the year and it's, at which time the, the closing of this deal could be made and, and no effect on the general fund be felt. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Okay.
Yeah, Kevin. Kevin, it's Tony.
Please, go ahead, Tony.
I couldn't unmute it fast enough, sorry.
Sure, no problem.
Just a question for Mr. Fozzie. Why didn't they do this the first time this came around?
You mean when you approved the purchase of the Hardy property? Or, or, or when the bond resolution was adopted in March?
Either one.
Okay, let's take the bond resolution being adopted in March. This language was in that bond resolution, except the reference to the Hardy property was not because who knew the Hardy property was going to be purchased then? You know, it's a $10 million bond resolution that allows the town to purchase property as they become available and those properties are basically unknown whether they'll ever be proj, uh, purchased. So how does that fit into the resolution we're doing now? The resolution we're doing now is specific to the Hardy property. And its specificity to the Hardy property brings it into compliance with the reimbursement reg, regulations adopted by the IRS or the Treasury Department that say that these reimbursement resolutions have to reasonably identify a specific purpose for the potential reimbursement. So, oh, okay, and there's another question you asked that I didn't answer, and that is, why wasn't this resolution adopted at the time the purchase of the property was approved, which is just recently? And the answer to that is that it all happened very quickly and by the time I was cognizant of exactly what was going on, it was, it was too late. And if that's not right, then Dan or Maria can speak up and then there's no explanation, except it's my fault for being untimely. But I, I think I wasn't quite aware of it.
I think you weren't, Mr. Dan Shopek, I think you, you weren't quite aware of it. After the resolution was, authorizing the purchase was passed, I entered into a conversation or, or asked Mr. Fozzie to let us know that everything was being done appropriately, at which point he pointed out that we needed this resolution to be adopted. So it, had we not asked him, we would have had other problems, so. I think we've, we've done the right thing here.
And those, those requirements, by the way, are statutory, is that correct?
Regulatory.
Regulatory, okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Tony, any other, did that answer your question or did you?
Yes, that did. I just have a, I have a kind of a question for Maria, but I'm not, if it's, it's pertinent to this, but it's a question I wanted to ask her before, but she wasn't there. I just wanted to know if it's, if you don't want to answer the question, I can answer, tell me later. I just want to know what, in this fiscal year, what our retiring debt's going to be?
Uh, we normally retire between 12 and 13 million dollars. I can give you the exact figure later on or forward to you tomorrow.
That's fine. It's not, not a rush. I just wanted to get a ballpark figure, that's all. Thanks for answering, I appreciate it.
And just for clarification sake, we're not, what we're doing here today doesn't change anything, just not, I know you know this, Tony, but just for the public's benefit, this doesn't change anything in terms of, of the town's debt or amount of debt or what we bonded, this is just a matter of, of what, what we're doing using this, this, these funds that have already been, been decided upon, is that right? Maria, did you, were you raising your hand? Okay.
That does not increase any debt.
Right, right, okay. Any other questions of the committee? Discussion?
Through the chair, it's Dawn Contafio. Mr. Fozzie, I have a question about the 18-month payback period. Is that also in the regulations?
Yes, it's actually not a payback period. It, well, it is, it is a payback period for the paying back from the source of the original payment. So yes, 18 months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. This, call the vote.
Kevin Shively.
Yes?
Dawn Contafio.
Yes.
Michael Miller.
Yes.
Lori Rosasco-Schwarz.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
Yes.
Mary Isaac.
Yes.
Unanimous.
That's the way we like it. Okay. Mr. Sinto, would you mind bringing Resolution TC 28-126 to the floor, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's TC 28-124, my apologies, I skipped over that.
Oh, okay. Be it resolved that resolution, that the resolution of $5,000 is hereby appropriated from fund balance to 01015400-52202, professional services.
Do I have a second?
Contafio, second.
And just to bring everybody back up to speed, this is of course, the payment of the services that we all heard the presentation recently before both the, first the committee and then the full town council of our environmental resources study of, of our inventory. Any discussion or questions regarding this?
Yeah, Kevin, it's Tony. Sinto. Was this in the budget for last year and it was taken out?
Actually, I, Maria, I don't believe this was actually orig, was this originally allocated in the budget?
Yeah, this was originally in the budget, but it was taken by, taken out by the Board of Finance. And, you know, I don't think the committee realized that and came to the town council for, to reinstate that, that dollar amount.
So it was, it was a two-year study and they didn't realize, conservation didn't know it was taken out. And the Board of Finance didn't know it was for over a two-year span, so that's why it was removed.
And I actually looked back a few years and it looks like one year was budgeted for and possibly the, the study was not, the phase one was not completed, so that money went back to the general fund. I believe that was 2018 or 19.
Well, I think I speak for a lot of people, I'm going to say that the, the results of that were, were quite, quite impressive and, and I think I certainly learned a lot from it, from the presentation given, and of course, it, it meets with our plan of concentration and development as well. And these are obviously services already rendered. So any other questions or concerns about this? Okay, hearing none?
Can I?
Oh, go ahead, please.
Can we make an emergency legislation or only at the town council level?
Town council level.
I don't think we need to do that at committee.
Dawn Contafio.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for reminding us that it should be.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Kevin Shively.
Yes?
Dawn Contafio.
Yes.
Michael Miller.
Yes.
Lori Rosasco-Schwarz.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
No.
And Mary Isaac.
Yep, yes.
Ms. Contafio, would you mind bringing TC 28-125 to the floor, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 28-125, be it resolved that resolution, that resolution 32,350 is hereby appropriated for the retained earnings to 2110000-581888, capital outlay.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mike Miller.
Thank you. And I believe we do have, Mr. Gaudiano is here to, to speak to this, I believe.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Could you explain this, this appropriation?
Yep, so we need to buy two pieces of equipment. We need to buy an aerator for $7,500, which was, the one we are placing is 30 years old, and a mower for approximately $25,000, which is 23 years old.
And this was something that was approved unanimously by the Gulf Commission, is that right?
It was.
Through the Board of Finance as well?
As, yes.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll go, I'll go, go ahead, Dawn, I'll go next, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. This was already approved by Board of Finance, is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, it was, yes.
Thank you. Next.
Oh, Kevin, it's Tony. I, I, I know, was this, was there money cut out of this enterprise account during the budget last year? I remember there was money cut out of that enterprise company, I just remember.
It was mainly seasonal and raises for the staff, which was then put back in at the, when the union contract was, was agreed upon.
And Maria, they're just moving money that they already have to a different line item, is that correct?
Uh, it's coming out of their retained earnings, so similar to the general fund.
Yeah, okay, but they're, but it's coming out of their.
It's coming out of their funds.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to double check that, thanks.
Right, and I believe that, you know, there was higher, actually higher than expected fees and things collected. I think they had something around 47,000 or something in retained earnings or something like that.
So yeah, just to give you guys a background.
I don't have the figure in front of me, but I think that's what it was.
The 2019 figure was 1,077,000 in retained earnings. We have a vote on our committee that we can't have retained earnings less than, or our goal is to have retained earnings of a million dollars. So we're transferring 32,500 for these equipment needs from retained earnings to our capital investment.
Right, specifically 32,350, I think is the number in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. To capital expenses, yep.
So we'll still be above that million-dollar retained earnings goal that we have.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Kevin Shively.
Yes?
Dawn Contafio.
Yes.
Michael Miller.
Yes.
Lori Rosasco-Schwarz.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
Yes.
And Mary Isaac.
Yes.
Moving on, Mrs. Rosasco-Schwarz, would you mind bringing Resolution TC 28-126 to the floor, please?
Certainly. Sorry, I just lost it on my screen.
That's all right.
Goodness. There we go. Resolution TC 28-126. Be it resolved that the Trumbull Town Council acknowledges the submission of the letter of application to the Connecticut Department of Housing and subsequently accepts the CVBG, Small Cities COVID-19 Funding, in the amount of $100,000. And Vicky H. Zorro, First Selectman, is hereby identified as the individual authorized to sign the application, assistance agreement, and all subsequent amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the project. Full resolution attached.
Do I have a second?
Dawn Contafio, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Any questions anyone has? Okay.
Did anybody want me to speak to it? Just let me know. This is Rena, I'm sorry.
Well, in short, this is, this is money that was appropriated to help support local businesses and, and is it not, is that?
This is a competitive grant that we applied for and won. We were just awarded right before Thanksgiving. The first Selectman and I had our startup conference call with the Department of Housing, so there was a pool of dollars allocated for the preparation and response to COVID, and there were very strict categories in which we could apply for projects. Our long-term recovery committee had been meeting on unmet needs and this particular project fit into the funding and fit into two of our primary long-term needs for recovery. One is business support, two is food stability. So we are going to use the funding to create a program called the Local Meals Program. It will provide meals for folks and their families who are shut in due to, you know, quarantining or COVID in the family, or, or individuals or workers who have contracted COVID or at risk, like elderly folks and so forth. The Social Services Department will team up with my department, or me, and Maria's finance folks, and we are going to meet with, we've already had a startup meeting. We will be creating referrals for the program and we're going to be doing a startup meeting with the restaurants and eateries to see which will be participating. So no money will change hands from residents to restaurants. There will be a vendor relationship set up with the restaurants. So it is an opportunity to bring some additional commerce to our restaurants for curbside and takeout at a time where they really need, as you all know, the business. So we're, we're happy to do this. We're in the contracting process and the startup process right now. They require a resolution of this body.
So in short, this is money that's going to go directly into our local economy and feed those people in our community that are most in need.
Correct.
Great, well, I'm very glad that we were able to secure this, these funds. Any, anyone else have any questions of Ms. Bakalar or for Selectman Tesoro?
One quickie, Mary Isaac. Rena, does this have to be spent within a certain amount of time? Or does it just continue as long as the funding's there?
So that's an interesting question. I haven't seen the contract package yet. There's a fairly decent amount of time, but they haven't given us an end date yet. So this, I mean, I, I would expect that it would take us out a year. I mean, we will probably spend it before then, given what is going on and the needs, but it, you know, they generally give you about a year for a project like this. We're awaiting our contract package.
Ms. Contafio?
Thank you, through the chair. Rena, do you contact the local businesses or can they contact you? Is that how it works or?
Both, so I'll be reaching out. We had a startup meeting last week with the internal staff and we got the paperwork together for the businesses and I'll be putting a business of, of meeting together, like a Zoom meeting with all the restaurants and eateries. And we'll be talking with them about this, so I'm working on that.
That's great, thank you.
But if anybody is, you know, I'm always willing to take some help, so if anybody is in the process of out there and you know somebody and then I haven't got to yet, you can tell them that this is coming. Some, some of them already know that it's coming. And I believe Dawn, Dawn Eng from the Trumbull Times is going to be covering this among other things in an article this week, so that will get the word out also.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Shively, if I could?
Please.
Thank you. I just want to thank Rena for her hard work on this grant. Obviously, this is, as Kevin pointed out, this is good both for our businesses and for our community members who are in need. Rena does a great job advocating all the time for our businesses in this very difficult time, so this is a substantial amount of money that will go right back into our economy here while helping our community members.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? So I'd like to ask if, if there's any reason we couldn't call this by unanimous consent. Does anyone else, anyone have any objection to this being passed by unanimous consent?
No.
So hearing no, no objections, thank you, and this will be passed by unanimous consent. Let's go to Ms. Isaac. Would you mind bringing Resolution TC 28-127 to the floor?
Excuse me. Be it resolved that the submission of the funding application for reimbursement to local health departments slash districts in agreement with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health is hereby authorized and Vicky H. Zorro, First Selectman, is identified as the individual authorized to sign the application and all subsequent amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the project. Full resolution attached. Dawn Contafio, second.
And is there anyone here to speak about this, to kind of fill us in? Is it Ms. Bakalar?
Yeah, so Lucy will be at the town council meeting, but she was unable to, she had a scheduling conflict tonight. But this is, this is a reimbursement grant. It's a direct allocation to the town's local health departments. I think all of the towns are getting this to basically just help with some costs associated with implementing the vaccine process. Things like the purchase of a refrigerator or freezer unit because it's a cold, what do they call it, a cold?
Cold storage.
Storage type vaccine. And you can use it for digital data loggers, to purchase barcode scanners and things like that that are associated with the implementation locally of vaccines. So this is again, a reimbursement grant to the town. It's a not, non-competitive grant, but we do have the contract for the money and administer the money and therefore it has to be approved by, by the council.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Again, this being something I'm, obviously our community will benefit greatly from. Do I have any objections to having this passed by unanimous consent of committee? Okay, thank you. Let's bring it back around to Mr. Miller. Would you mind bringing Resolution TC 28-128 to the floor, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 28-128, be it resolved that Resolution TC 27-89 as adopted on August 6, 2018, and amended by TC 27-187 on September 5, 2019, is hereby amended by substituting six months after the date the committee recommences meeting. hereby amended by substituting six months after the date the committee recommences meeting for March 2, 2020.
Second, Dawn Contafio.
And I believe this is the is this, this is the community facilities one that we're talking about and basically what we're really talking about here and and Ms. Katsky or Ms. Tisora can explain if there's anybody else that wants to speak to this, is just basically putting off since obviously we're not going to be doing, you know, moving immediately forward with these projects, this is just putting off the date another six months for that that committee to start meeting again, is that that, do I have that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
Except it's moving the date out based on, you know, when the the committee, as the resolution says, will begin meeting again at some point.
Right, okay.
Hey, Kevin, Kevin, this is Tony. Suggestion or request, should we amend this resolution to put the committee name in there? This doesn't tell you what committee this number six is for.
It doesn't, you're right. I mean, we will have it in the minutes, of course. I mean, it does reference the specific resolution that that references it. I mean, I think are you, your your concern is just to?
Well, you should put what committee it is.
Put it in there.
That's just, that's just, I think so, but you know, maybe it doesn't need to be in there, I just thought I'd mention it, that's all.
I would agree with that, I think.
If he makes the motion, I'll second that.
Sure, if you want to make that motion? Tony?
You're on mute.
Yeah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I like to make a motion to amend Resolution TC 28 dash 128 to add the committee, what's the committee this is for?
It's the.
Community Facilities Building Committee.
Perfect. Community Facilities Building Committee, okay.
Dawn said it perfectly, there you go.
And I'll second it as well, thank you.
Thanks.
So first we'll hear a vote by unanimous consent to approve the amendment. Any objections to that? Okay, and then again, by unanimous consent, if there are no objections to passing TC 28 dash 128 as amended form? Okay, so moved, so done. And then Ms. Contafio, can you bring us to a close here with Resolution TC 28 dash 129 to the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Resolution TC 28 dash 129, be it resolved that Resolution TC 27 dash 90, as adopted on August 6, 2018 and amended by TC 27 dash 118 on September 5, 2019 by substituting six months after the date the committee recommences the meeting for March 2, 2020.
Do I have a second? Was that you, Mr. Miller?
I got it.
Okay, yeah, great. Mr. Sento, would you like to make a similar amendment? This is basically for the aquatics building committee, the same thing as the previous resolution? Did you want to add that name? I think you're on mute again here.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to amend TC 28 dash 129 to add the aquatics committee.
Is it? Building, what is it? Building committee, Aquatics Building Committee, okay.
Aquatics Facilities Building Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
I'll second Dawn Contafio.
Thank you.
And once more, any objection to unanimous consent for the amendment? Hearing none, may I also ask for unanimous consent for Resolution TC 28 dash 129 in its amended form?
Yes.
Great, okay, so passed. Is there any more business before this committee? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Dawn Contafio?
Second, Mike Miller.
Do I hear any objection to unanimous consent to adjourn?
No.
So eager. I hope everybody has a great rest of your night, I hope you had a great holiday and thank you very much, we are adjourned.